Okay, I'd like to call the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors AM meeting this Thursday, February 1st, 2024, to order at 9:00 to 10:00 AM. Let's open with a Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08. The time allocated to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. First item of business is approval of the January 18th, 2024 Board of Supervisors. Oops, I'm sorry. Public comment? All right. Next item is approval of the January 18th, 2024 Board of Supervisors' meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Treasurer's Report and the Authorization to Pay Bills and Approve Payroll. I will make a move.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may, do a brief introduction to the report. It is a, your report this morning is a little different than what it appears on the agenda. Included in your packet is a list of bills for the board's authorization. The packet does not include payroll nor a Treasurer's Report. And I'm also pleased to announce that the township's treasurer has given birth to a healthy baby girl. So with that, I respectfully ask the board make a motion to pay the bills.
You're making a motion?
I would respectfully ask the board to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and approve the payroll.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All business. I see there is nothing listed on the agenda. New business. We have engagement of the Cohen Law Group to perform cable franchise agreement. I assume it's to review the cable franchise agreement. Mr. Revan.
Yeah, so included in your packet this morning is an engagement letter with the Cohen Law Group. I introduced this project to the board as part of my report at the second meeting in January. The scope of services is working with the Chester County Managers Consortium, representing many municipalities in Chester County, to perform, one, an audit of franchise fees received from Verizon in the current period, and, two, to negotiate a new contract for the expiring franchise agreement. The actual cost depends on the number of municipalities participating. At this point, the cost will be $8,075 because there are more than 14 municipalities participating. If we can get to 20, the cost would be $7,600. And the action item this morning would be authorizing me to execute the engagement letter on behalf of East Brandywine Township.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the engagement letter of the Cohen Law Group to perform the cable franchise agreement. Review and negotiations.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brandywine Valley Active Aging Contribution. Mr. Revan.
All right. Also in your packet this morning is a letter from the Brandywine Valley Active Aging Organization. The letter describes a, and I'm sorry, I'd like to state for the record that Chairman Scribner has joined us by phone. Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, I was just being quiet.
The record describes services provided in the prior year and services provided by the Active Aging Organization in general. And the reason it's on the agenda is because that correspondence includes a request for a annual contribution in the amount of $2,000. The last time the township made a contribution to BVAA was 2019, and that amount was $2,000. There is no budgeted allocation in the current year, so my spending authority is for items that are budgeted. And less than $10,000, I may proceed. That's my spending authority. It's on your agenda because it is not budgeted. I can, there's a number of ways we can handle this. We can refer this to the Budget Committee. You could authorize me to make a payment to them in the current year. We could invite them to come in and make a presentation. Or we may decline.
This is the first request since 2019?
Yes. Well, certainly hasn't been a contribu-, I can't speak for requests. I can speak for contributions. The township has not made a contribution since 2019.
And in our checklist, we just made a contribution to Dark, right?
To the Downingtown Area Recreation Consortium.
That was budgeted.
Correct.
Okay.
We budget contributions to the library and to the Downingtown Area Recreation Consortium. Historically, we have budgeted for the, what used to be the Senior Center. I'm struggling over the name because my instinct is to call it the Senior Center, but it is the Brandywine Valley Active Aging.
Question, Luke, what did we provide as a contribution in 2019?
The same amount they're asking for, $2,000.
$2,000? So this is something we've done in the past?
Correct.
Yeah, but that's five years ago.
I understand.
I'm questioning why are they asking now?
Is there a reason we stopped making that contribution?
There was a great deal of upheaval when the Downingtown Senior Center, the Coachville Senior Center were told they had to...
Merge.
Merge.
Okay, right. So I risk of misremembering the history, but I would describe our usual processes during the annual budget process. In the fall of each year, we solicit and receive multiple requests from funding from our partners. The reason there's nothing budgeted this year is because we did not receive a request at the time we were formulating the budget. And I would expect that that's the condition that's existed since 2020.
But their letter dated January 9th, 2024, thanks us for the 2023 contribution.
I have no record that we made a contribution that year.
Right.
It appears it's a form letter because you'll see they put Upper East Brandywine.
Yeah, we are Upper East Brandywine as well.
Yeah. I'm going to be honest with you. I'd love to make the contribution, but I think it should be referred to the Budget Committee for 2024 to review it. This has come in late. It's after the budget was approved. We...
Yeah, that's the only hiccup, is that, I can agree with it being reviewed by the Budget Committee. If we would have gotten it in time, it could have probably...
It would have been reviewed, right.
Yeah, been inserted into the annual budget.
Right.
I mean, they do good work.
And we could probably, we could probably send a letter saying such that, you know, their request came in after the budget and that we would request it to be sooner for the following year.
Well, I'm concerned that they believe we contributed $2,000, and I don't remember ever seeing it, so...
My diligence was checking the expense line item, so the 300 budget line item account. I did not do a vendor search.
All right, well, that's what the Budget Committee can do then.
I would agree.
So I'll make a motion to table the request.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Just as...
Table the request and refer it to the Budget Committee.
I'm in favor of that. I just want to point out that the 51 residents that they note in this letter, it works out to be $39 a year for the services and for the activity. And I can speak on behalf from a personal perspective, as my mother participated at the Downingtown Senior Center for years, and it was great for her. And it, you know, it helped stay off the dementia, and they had a lot of great activities there, and I think this is a good cause.
Right, and being their auditor for many years, I agree, but I know that there was turmoil and resentment and...
Yeah, yeah, we were very disappointed that they left Downingtown. I can agree with that.
So I'd like to find out more what's going on.
Yeah, it was nice having it local, nice having it down in town, but those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that, we already voted on that, okay. The next is the Bonsville Mill Permission to Advertise Phase Four...
Sorry, Carl, Carl, I don't believe we finished the, not that we needed to probably, but I think you, I made the second, and then you had the discussion, and that's where we stopped.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we voted. So, any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Kyle. Bonsville Mill Permission to Advertise Phase Four of the Lot Construction. Mr. Bascala.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've been making progress over the last several years on what we call the Garden Project. We obtained two rounds of grants from the county and the state to support that project. And we've completed Phases One and Two, which were removal of the concrete pad and the installation of soils and infrastructure for the garden. And we've mostly completed Phase Three, which would be the purchase of the plants for the garden. And we are now approaching Phase Four, which is the parking lot to service the additional attention that the park is going to be getting. This is funded by the second round of grants that we got from the county and DCNR. We have a budget of about $150,000 for this task, including engineering costs. And Panoni has put together a plan set for the parking lot and is in the process of putting together bid documents for submission to the county and DCNR for their review. It will be a gravel parking lot, for the most part, about 40 spaces, utilizing a historic parking area. So it's already fairly flat, but it needs to be regraded and stone installed over that. And the lot would not be lined. The parking spaces would be defined by parking stops. So there's about 40 spaces, and we'd have parking stops at each of the suggested spaces, and the parking stops would help the visitors to the park identify where to park. Included in that also are two ADA spaces that would be paved. And there is currently a soil and debris pile in that area that would be removed as part of this task. And there will be an installation of a BMP in the form of a rain garden to handle runoff from the parking lot. Also included would be some tree removal and the installation of a drain pipe that would handle drainage from the buildings and take it away from the corner of the buildings to the other side of the lot. So we're looking to get the bid documents and the plan to the county and the DCNR for their review by early next week, and advertise for bids on February 26th and March 4th, with bids due March 15th. And we hope to award the contract at your Board of Supervisors' meeting on March 21st. So today, I'm looking for your authorization to bid the project. And assuming that is given, we can start the ball rolling on the other items I listed in my schedule. Overall, we hope to finish the lot by the end of June, and I think that's a conservatively long estimate. We could likely finish before then, but I'm hoping to be completely done by the end of June.
I have just one more addition to that. It would be anticipated that the board would be asked to award the contract to the apparent low bidder at the second meeting in March.
Yeah, I had that in my schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Could you help me orientate the map?
The buildings are on the left side of the map. You see the driveway coming in from the right side? That is the drive that leads from the lower bridge that crosses Beaver Creek. So this includes stone along that drive as well. Right now, it's a very rough stone that was designed to knock mud off construction vehicles during previous construction work. So it would include regrading the parking lot and placing the stone and compaction and grading all the way up through the drive to the bridge. And you can see the depression there on the right side is the BMP, the rain garden, to handle runoff from the lot.
Up in the upper left-hand corner, is that the path up to the buildings?
Yeah, that's the path that goes up behind the buildings there. The ADA spaces are along the buildings on the left-hand side of the parking lot there. And there will be space over in that area between the trail leading up behind the buildings and the ADA spaces for a restroom facility. We're looking to install a restroom facility similar to what you're putting in over at the community park. Would be a self-contained unit that would have a water tank, you know, flushable toilets, running water, would have its own water tank and a waste tank, and it would have to be serviced periodically. But we're allowing space for that in the area between the ADA parking spaces and the trail that leads up behind the buildings. We're also looking, just so you're aware... Yes, Kyle?
Sorry, I, do we have any concern with, I know in the parking lot closest to Bonsville Road, we had the flooding where we had a lot of washed-out stone. Do we have any concern with the other parking area with washout, with storm?
I don't think we do. The parking lot closest to the road, I think you're thinking of the hurricane, was that Ida?
Correct.
Hurricane Ida, where the water was actually flowing from the creek over the wall at the bridge there and coming across the parking lot, and it scoured the parking lot. I don't think that we've had any scouring issues in storms between Ida and now. So I don't anticipate that we'll have an issue in a lot closest to the road as well as this lot.
And then, sorry, just to piggyback off of that, with the stone, I know it's obviously a cost to us, but as you've probably have seen in the past, and I know Scott Riesman has been able to use and get for free sometimes the chipped-up basketball and recompact it on different projects. And that's something that PennDOT gives away when they do their resurfacing. Is that an option?
Yeah, to touch on that, milling, you're referring to millings, Kyle?
Correct.
Highway millings. And, I mean, just from a personal note, I have tons of it. I'll donate it to you.
Well, I'm not sure how Panoni is going to specify this in the bid, but I think it's up to the bidder to determine how he's going to do this work and the cost for that.
Because isn't there an option to crush some of the broken-up concrete and other stuff?
We had looked at doing that, and I don't think that we're doing that any longer. Let me restate that. I'm not sure of the details of the way Panoni is putting this into the bid specifications. It is possible that there could be a provision for the bidder to use the concrete there and crush it for the parking lot or bring in stone, but I think they're leaving it up to the bidder.
I guess to Kyle's point, can we suggest to Panoni the option or possibility of using millings on some of this project to defer the cost of quarried stone? Just a thought that...
And the millings lock up sometimes, almost like a parking lot would. They still allow water to pass through it, but they almost do lock up, you know, with some of the tar that's still left in the past project. But I've seen people use it for driveways, I've seen them use it for roads, I've seen them use it for parking areas, and I've been impressed with the, again, for the fact that it's free nine out of 10 times, but the way that it compacts pretty well.
Would this make the parking lot then impervious and require much more engineering on the stormwater?
The parking lot is considered impervious.
Even with just stone?
Yes.
Right, so as Jim alluded earlier in his presentation, this is a, the site was an existing parking lot, but the plans do include a stormwater management feature.
A rain garden?
Yeah, a basin. So, you know, using the terms that a homeowner would use, you would say that this is not net-new impervious, but that the township is still investing in a stormwater feature.
Correct, no, I understand, and that would make the millings appropriate to be considered.
Right. I will point out also that this is being funded by grants, so it's always great to reduce costs, and especially if the township is paying for it, but we do have the benefit of having this supported.
I have a question on the, we're constructing a parking lot, and we have a one, a single-lane bridge access off of Bonsville Road, which is a state highway, which is fairly heavily What thought or how has been given to how to control the access to and from the parking lot? That's question number one. And then question number two is, that bridge itself, the wing walls were damaged, and we have performed what I was told was a temporary fix. Maybe the temporary is going to become a permanent.
Well, the temporary fix is pretty substantial, and I don't think there's a lot of concern there, but a permanent fix is not...
Not according to an engineered specification or...
Okay.
Right, it's, we're worried that somebody's going to, some federal agency is going to come in and say, well, you can't do it that way.
Right. The repair of the east bridge access is still a project for which FEMA and PIMA have pledged support since the damage on the site was caused by Hurricane Ida. The bridge can be used now, thanks to an in-house temporary repair that was funded by FEMA and PIMA and installed by Public Works. It is not shown in the scope of this project because it is outside of the scope of the grant.
Correct, but my concern is, my concern is that with 40 spaces, or whatever the number was, 40 spaces, are we creating a traffic hazard or maybe? I want to make sure that the 40 spaces are usable, logically usable. Even though it's a grant, it's still taxpayer money coming from someplace.
We have to rely on Panoni's engineering.
We are looking at everything up to the bridge. We are not looking at access from the other side of the bridge.
That's what I thought.
And I don't expect that there's going to be a huge amount of conflict between traffic leaving and traffic coming in because we're not necessarily going to have a set schedule for things. You know, the park is open from dawn to dusk, so you're going to have the natural ebb and flow of traffic throughout the day, so that's going to be spread out.
All right.
I haven't looked, we haven't looked at the other side of the bridge because we have a deadline on this grant, and we want to finish the scope of work for our side of the bridge to complete this project and close out the grants. These grants have a deadline of the end of this year. And my fear of getting into the details of access on the other side of the bridge, we're getting PennDOT involved, and we all know what the timeline could be for that kind of thing. So I would like to finish this aspect of it, and if necessary, we can look at the access side of it in the future.
All right, and Luke, you mentioned that FEMA and PIMA now are back being interested in repairing the bridge. I thought they had rejected that bridge repair, saying we had deferred maintenance on it for too long.
No, there are two culverts or bridges that were damaged by Hurricane Ida, for which we've been working with FEMA and PIMA, and the projects are not complete. One is on Old Horseshoe Pike, and the other is on the, is the downstream bridge at Bonsville Mill. PIMA and FEMA never indicated that they would not pay for the Bonsville Mill Bridge. They did, however, limit the scope based on what they determined to be pre-existing conditions in earlier bridge reports. So to put some meat on there, they are still willing to pay for armoring the wing wall, which is a project that would make the bridge more resistant to high-water events. They will not pay for a stone or riprap on the, at the bottom of the repair, of the buttment where scour had occurred prior to Ida.
Okay, so they are back in looking at it. I mean, I was part of that phone call where they said no.
That very tense phone call that you witnessed was relative to Old Horseshoe Pike. And they're back on board there, and as a matter of fact, we've got $374,000 deposited just yesterday for that.
Out of curiosity, when might that work occur? The bridge repair work, if it's supported by FEMA?
I do not know.
That next year?
I do not know.
Two years?
I can say that no attempt would be done to do it during, while this project is in hand, because it would deprive vehicles delivering heavy loads of stone for this. So necessarily, it will be the second project, but I don't know precisely when.
Okay.
Are the temporary repairs that were done to the bridge will allow the construction trucks that are doing the project to go back and cross safely without damaging the bridge?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we had tri轴s delivering many, many loads of amended soils across that bridge.
Is this being designed for when you have large events down there that, in the past, we've had school buses doing the, bringing people back and forth between the township building? Are you going to continue to use the last lot for that, or is this also designed to allow that?
This is going to be designed to handle the additional attention that the park is going to get with the act... is going to get with the activities. So we'll have up to 40 spaces. If there's a potential for additional traffic to the park, we would have to develop some kind of supplemental transport, similar to what you just discussed, shuttling between the parking lot here and the park. But I think most of our events, the 40 spaces plus the 20 or 25 spaces in the existing lot will handle our events.
Any other discussion? I'll make a motion that we give Bonsville, or we advertise the Bonsville Mill...
It's...
Well, it says Bonsville Mill Permission. It's really the township that does the advertising, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that the township advertise the Bonsville Mill Phase Four Lot Construction.
Okay.
I want to make an amendment to that to include consideration of other materials than what has been specifically called out at this time from Panoni, to have them look into the millings.
I will have a, I will communicate with Panoni after this meeting to give them your feedback, and I, unless they have some reservations about that material for technical reasons...
That's fine.
I'm sure that they would be willing to add that as a possibility for a bidder, that material.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
They have to vote on the amendment first. Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we're back to the, now we're back to the first motion. Any further discussion on the first motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number seven, subdivisions and zoning applications. I note that there's none before us. Item number eight, ordinances and resolutions for consideration. I also note there's none before us. Is there any further public comment on non-agend items? And number 10, notices, there were no executive sessions held between January 19th and February 1st, 2024. I make a motion for adjournment?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.